Please stand if you're able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. Next on the agenda is a public comment. Does anyone wish to make a comment not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, I will move on. Reports from school committee members. Mr. Oakley, go right ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I was speaking to a parent over the past couple of weeks that is very interested in literacy models. And she gave me an awful lot of stuff to think about specifically in regards to the models that are out there, the models to choose from, and it made me realize that I have an awful lot more to learn about these things. And I wondered if I could request that maybe we at some point have, maybe even the new Director of Curriculum come in and talk to us about what we do, what the plan is.
Yeah, Superintendent and I had talked about that. We're scheduled for the next meeting. Next, scheduled for the next meeting. We have that ahead, we're ahead of that.
Okay. And her name was Jessica Davis, and she was the parent. She was very, very cool to talk to, so anyway, thank you.
Anybody else? I'm seeing no one. I would just like to remind the community that there is a vote on Saturday from nine o'clock to three o'clock. And it's on the building of a new BP Technical School. So you can go to the BP Technical School site, they have a lot of information, learn about it, but it is an unusual vote in the sense that it is not the normal hours, it is nine o'clock to three o'clock. Although Middleborough will be changing their polling locations, all are staying the same for this particular election. So you would go to wherever you were going in the past.
And the high school gymnasium will be the high school polling site, and there'll be signs directing folks to that polling site.
Fantastic. So I didn't want to mention that. Anybody else have anything? Then with that, I'll move on.
I was just gonna ask, in regards to that vote, is there anything that you would let people know who might not research on their own, or just like a couple of sentences about this particular vote that's important? Is there anything that we should know?
So what, as I understand what BP is trying to do, is BP is trying to build a new school. Their school is currently roughly the same age as our previous high school. So the vote is to allow them to have, to make, to build a new school. It combines all the towns together, and simple majority wins on either side. It isn't like you have to win the majority of towns, it's just majority of votes. Now, for Middleborough's portion, then there would have to be a decision about how we pay that. That payment plan would first come from the selectmen whether or not they, they put an article on town meeting and do it through the regular budget, or if they do it through an override, that would be them to have the first conversation and then to go from there. Thank you very much. No, no problem.
This has nothing to do with the school budget, the Middleborough Public Schools' operational budget, it's entirely separate.
Thank you. Anybody else? Natalia, you are my friend.
For this week, starting off with MKG, MKG has been celebrating Read Across America Week. Each day this week has an assigned spirit day, along with suggestions of stories and books for families. It's been wonderful to see the creativity with Crazy Hair Day, favorite book character, as well as everyone's favorite sports teams. They would like to thank their PTA and Mr. Hutchinson for their incredible update and redesign of the staff room at MKG. This was a wonderful surprise for the entire staff. Mrs. White would especially like to thank Wood Palace and Skyline for their donations to the PTA. For HBB, things are great at HBB, it's been great seeing all the kids' smiling faces. They started the HBB Annual Read-A-Thon this week and are already approaching $20,000 raised and 28,000 minutes read. The Read-A-Thon is an exciting event that encourages reading and builds literacy skills as kids participate in their own reading adventure that challenges each reader to complete various reading milestones over a two-week period. They have a ton of fun planned for the next two weeks, including visits from Clifford the Big Red Dog and Dress Like Your Favorite Character Day. All students who read, all students who read win prizes, and the more they read, the more they can win. If anyone is looking to sponsor a student, they should reach out to the school. Thank you to all of the parents and teachers who have come together to make this event a success. For Nichols Middle School, the next Builders Club meeting will take place next Tuesday, March 8th, with Mr. Redpath. Congratulations to two of the Nichols middle schoolers, Ken Mentee, a sixth grader, during the Youth States Tournament, Ken went off and pinned his way into the finals and earned the gold medal. In addition, Matt Patterson, an eighth grader, made history by being the first NMS student to compete as a sachem at states and earned third place in his weight class. This qualified Matt to compete in the All States. Congratulations to Ken and Matt for their accomplishments. The National Association of Educational Progress Testing will take place with 58th grade students on Tuesday, March 15th. The NMS Concert Choir will be held on March 22nd at 6:30 PM, and the Orchestra and Band Concert will be held on March 23rd in the Nichols Middle School Auditorium. The orchestra will perform at 6:00 PM and the band will perform at 7:15 PM. Lastly, for MHS, Quarter Three Progress Reports will be distributed to all students on Monday, March 7th, through Aspen at 2:00 PM. Quarter Three Parent-Eacher Conferences will be held on Wednesday, March 9th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM virtually. Parents should have an email with directions on signing up for appointments. This Friday, the boys' basketball team will play in the second round of the state tournament at Mansfield High School at 6:30 PM. Also this Friday, the hockey team will be playing in their first round of the state tournament against Hope Dale High School at 7:00 PM in the Blackstone Valley Iceplex. We want to wish both teams good luck. The following clubs will be taking place on Wednesdays at 2:00 PM. Key Club in Room C149, GSA in Room C158, and Yes Club in Room C159. The members of National Honor Society are offering a program to all students in all classes, allowing for weekly meetings with a one-on-one tutor. This is a free tutoring opportunity, please reach out to Mr. Goldman if you are interested.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions, Winthac? Thank you very much, Winthac. And next on the agenda is Superintendent's report, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, members of the audience. I would like to begin with the COVID-19 update for the town. I would let you know that I always try to give some historical data. Back in September 29th, we were at 25 positive cases. We ballooned to a max of 139 on January 7th. January 14th, we were down to 76. January 26th, we were down to 47. February 3rd, we were down to 22. February 17th, we were down to 10. And as of today, we are down to four. So that's four active cases in our school district as of today, which is good news and positive news. I hope everyone agrees with that. The town reports that there were 29 positive PCR tests over the last two weeks. Seven of those happened to be individuals under the age of 18. And again, three of them have, are, were eliminated because of the dates that came between now and then. So that's where the positive cases, follow-up by school nursing and public health nursing, has observed symptoms described in the range from little or no symptoms, mild illness, and we've heard a few descriptions of symptoms like having a mild or a heavy cold, if you will. And the Jaclyn Nurse Jaclyn from the town reports that there are no, currently no severe illnesses in our community, which is a real positive for Middleborough and for everyone. So that's the COVID report. Are there any questions from the committee? Okay, hearing none. Do you want to offer up to the audience if anyone has any?
Anybody have any questions about that? Sorry.
Okay. Okay, I'll move on with my report. Next is Middleborough Public Schools' Emotional Support Presentation. We have with us this evening Carolyn Lyons and Mr. Kevin Avitabaly, and they are going to provide you with an update as per your request and as per the public's request for basically a summary of everything we have going on with regard to social-emotional. And in this role, Carolyn tonight is PPS Director, and Kevin Avitabaly is the newly appointed this year Coordinator of Social-Emotional Learning. Welcome both of you this evening, and we look forward to your presentation.
Thank you. So yes, as Superintendent Lynch mentioned, this has been a topic of conversation for actually quite some time in our district. Ms. Farley's reached out about social-emotional support, mental health supports in the past. We'll talk a little bit about the past in a few moments. Mr. Oakley and I had a conversation a couple of weeks ago to discuss exactly what type of supports families can look to here in our schools. So tonight, what I'm going to be doing is talking a little bit about where we've been and a little bit about our future and where we're going. So as you heard, you know, Superintendent Lynch introduced both of us, but I wanted to take special consideration, this is the first time our community has met Kevin Avitabaly, who is our Coordinator of Social-Emotional Learning. I didn't know if you wanted to give a little introduction.
So it's definitely not the first time the community has met me. I'm a 2003 graduate of Middleborough High School, so I grew up here, I was very involved in the community. The last 15 years, I've been in Plymouth in varying roles. I was at Adjustment Counselor at the high school, at Plymouth North High School. I was the middle school Vice Principal at PCIS, and then the Principal or the Director of Alternative Education in Plymouth, and the Principal of Harvard Academy, which was their alternative high school. During that time, we took our credit recovery high school, which served about 80 to 100 students, and we transitioned it into a full-time therapeutic school-to-work alternative high school with our own separate space, our own separate staff. We were really able to work on our at-risk learners and provide them opportunities moving forward. So that's something that, when I, when I applied to this job, I think when you hear SEL, you think curriculum, what you're doing in terms of just, you know, what curriculums are in the classroom, what are we doing with that? For me, it's a little bit deeper than that. It's structural and it's systematic. And you'll see kind of in the presentation today, a lot of the things that I've been working on the last six months or so, kind of geared towards that way. So it's, we're definitely working on some curriculum models, but it's a lot more structural in my opinion, so it's nice to meet all of you.
Thanks. And then for those of you who actually recognize Kevin from last spring, CPAC, our Special Education Parent Advisory Council, partnered with the Middleborough Public Schools for a mental health awareness raising event. Kevin happened to be one of our panelists from last spring. So if you are recognizing him, that could be why. So in terms of tonight, you know, Mr. Oakley and I had a lengthy conversation about really what is social-emotional learning. There's a lot of conversation socially, you know, out in the society and then also within public schools about what mental health is, what our kids are facing, and how we can help. So tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about what social-emotional learning is in a public school system. We're going to talk about where mental health fits into this. Mental health has become a bit of a buzz phrase in the sense that everyone's talking about it. It helps to put mental health into the larger context of all of the social-emotional learning skills that go into child development. So we're going to be talking a little bit about that. And then lastly, and most importantly, where can families go for assistance? You know, you might have a child who's very young and not experiencing any significant issue at this time, but things change over time. Children develop over time, they experience different things. So it's not uncommon for a student to require assistance. We're going to talk a little bit about that as well. So what I wanted to do is give us a background about where we've been, because social-emotional learning is not a new concept in Middleborough Public Schools, or really even statewide. If you look back, or if you look on our website, you can see our strategy for continuous district improvement. This was a document that was drafted in 2017, and it's really divided into three major initiatives, three major concepts. The third concept is actually the culture of well-being. And one of the critical components of this plan looks at implementing, well, planning, developing, and implementing programs and protocols which will continue to positively impact social-emotional growth and well-being of all members of our school community. So this has been alive and well in the district minimally since 2017, but I would argue even prior to that point in time. When you look historically at how the school committee in particular has, has really supported the financial backing of social-emotional learning in Middleborough, what you'll see is a district that has never cut clinical service and has never cut therapeutic emotional support to students. That is extremely rare in the state of Massachusetts, and in particular Southeast Massachusetts. Over the last 10 to 15 years, you've seen things like school adjustment counselors be cut due to budgetary constraints, or you've seen decisions where school psychologists might also run a double duty as a special ed administrator in a district because, again, it's a cost-savings mechanism. Time and again, the Middleborough Public Schools has not chosen to do that. What you'll see over time is that we've expanded our team, which is mighty and frankly very, very qualified. So I wanted to make sure I pointed that out. Mr. Oakley made a point about Interface, which is a resource available for anybody who lives here in Middleborough. And Interface is a platform that you can reach out to and find referrals for counseling and therapeutic intervention. Now, as of, I think it was the last meeting, they had indicated, I think that was the last school committee meeting, they had indicated that they were, they were so busy that they had stopped taking phone calls. And I'm happy to report that I received a message just this past Monday that they are accepting calls again as of February 28th. They are now live and available. Additionally, you've seen the Middleborough Public Schools fund a Family Resource Center, and I think, we've had Meg Quirk come and present in the past, but the Family Resource Center is a system of varied supports. There are, there are a host of things that Meg Quirk assists with, not just food insecurity or families going through, you know, financial hardship, but she's also a source of referral for any number of social services. She's available, and I should have put her information on here, but she's located at the Berkland Elementary School, and she's also accessible on our website. As I mentioned earlier, one of the other things you've seen our community do is host awareness-raising events, like the mental health awareness event last spring. It was chaired by multiple parties. The CPAC President, at the time it was Shelley Burrard, who was present for that platform. Kevin was there, along with Joshua Porter, our Director of Alternative Pathways here in our district. And I thought that it was, you know, a very well-put-together presentation for the community as they navigate, you know, either new or ongoing concerns with their children. Most recently, you've seen this community double down once again on its financial commitment to expanding social-emotional supports for children. So what I've outlined here is just some of the initiatives that have gone on. The Coordinator of Social-Emotional Learning, sitting to my left, is one notable expansion of our larger administrative team. We also added a .5, so halftime, school psychologist who splits time at the Nichols Middle School and the Middleborough High School. That was brought on with the understanding that as we reopened schools, there may be additional testing and backlog testing the district would have to comply with. In order to make sure we met those needs, we had a desire to make sure our school psychologists were still available to all of our students as a support. So the way we leveraged that support was to bring on additional help for testing to free up our existing school psychologists to support our students. We also brought on a .5, so again, a halftime school adjustment counselor at the Memorial Early Childhood Center. And you might notice that that's our earliest learners. So when you're talking about students at that age, you're not necessarily talking about 30-minute counseling sessions. What you're talking about is someone who's available to push into classrooms and structure lessons and really embed that social-emotional learning right into, you know, classroom instruction. We've also expanded our behavior team, which is something I've talked to you all about over the years that I've been the Director. We previously had a BCBA, and we have now seen the expansion, it was either two or three years ago, I think it might have been, I think it might have been three years ago, when we brought on a Registered Behavior Technician. This year, we saw the expansion increase by two more Registered Behavior Technicians, which now means we have one BCBA, we increased the BCBA time, and three different Registered Behavior Technicians. The BCBA, Board Certified Behavior Analyst, these individuals, there are four of them, spread out throughout the district to provide behavioral support on a whole host of cases. Their caseload has actually been growing exponentially in the last couple of months. And then lastly, there was initiative that we ran during the summer of 2021, and it was to allow counselors to support families over the summer break. As you all know, 10 weeks away from instruction can be a lengthy time. If you are working with a family and you've engaged that family with a partnership, a collaborative effort to work with a child, that 10-week break can be long. So what we did was we sponsored through the, through our ESSER grant, the ability to fund time over the summer, to not just keep a touchstone with families, but keep our action plans moving, so that when our students resumed here in September, they didn't have to start over. They could just continue to keep running. So those are some of the examples of where we've been. When you look at social-emotional learning, you have to look at what we've done as a district as a whole, and then look at our building-based approaches as well. Middleborough employs a whole-child approach to education, which means that students are assessed in all domains. You're not just looking at how a student performs in math or literacy, it's how a student performs socially, emotionally, how they're managing their self-advocacy, their emotions, their decision-making. We're looking at all functions of, quite honestly, human behavior. We also use, and actually, social-emotional functioning has always been addressed at all five buildings. That's, that's not a new concept, and it's not something that's, that's a result of the recent Continuous Plan for Improvement in 2017 either. The Child Study Team process is a building-based approach that's used in all of our buildings as well. So for those of you who aren't familiar with what Child Study Team is, that's when you have educators in our building collect data on how students are performing, and when I say data, what I'm talking about is far beyond grades. It could be attendance, it could be trips to the nurse, it could be, you know, bids to meet with a counselor, it could be social-emotional functioning, all areas of performance. These child study teams convene to discuss how students are doing and cultivate individualized plans in order to address whatever's going on, see how we can wrap around our services with families, and ensure that students are meeting with success. All of our buildings employ a full-time school psychologist, which I've learned as recently as this week is actually unusual. When you take a cross-section of the communities in Southeast Massachusetts, that is not frequently the case that every building has its own designated school psychologist. This has been the case for quite some time in Middleborough. We also now have that one, at least one, school adjustment counselor per building, and in several of our buildings, we have more than one. All buildings engage in crisis referral and management. Sometimes, students go through very significant issues and require hospitalization or enter periods of crisis. All of our buildings are trained and regularly engage in managing that day and beyond with the student and the family. One of our buildings also has a therapy dog, who we have talked about here before at the Berkland Elementary School. We also provide assistance in transitioning into and out of hospitalization. So as I was talking about earlier with crisis referral, you know, a student receiving that assistance at that point in time is just the first step. Once that student comes out of a hospitalization and re-enters the school day, in our school community, there's more work to be done, and our school teams manage that at all five buildings. And then also, there's possible referral for either a 504 plan or potentially special education. This was an overview of our building-based approaches to how we're managing social-emotional learning. The role of special education, the reason I put this on a slide is because I want you to kind of make a division in your mind, these are two separate entities that work towards the same goal. We have special education referrals and interventions which include social and emotional well-being and mental health. So when you think of special education, sometimes there is a belief that special education is just someone who's struggling with a learning disability or something academically based. But in reality, special education is much more encompassing than, than just, you know, basic learning skills. Special education interventions could include, and often do include, assessment in those areas, and then direct services provided by school psychologists, school adjustment counselors, school social workers, and guidance counselors. It also includes, I didn't put it on here, but it also includes our behavior team. There are a host of interventions they might themselves be managing or assisting with a targeted behavior intervention plan and follow-up skills that we'd be kind of baking into that process as well. Special education programming also exists for students with emotional impairments at all levels, which includes specific programs for students in grades one through 12. These are substantially separate programs with devoted clinical staff. Lastly, or not lastly, because there's two more, our, our special ed team engages regularly in wraparound case management. You might be asking yourself, well, what does that mean? Of course, there's always collaboration and family engagement efforts to work with our, with our families, but sometimes families have outside teams that they're working with as well. And so managing that case is just another facet of what we do. And then additionally, there is home-based services, there are home-based services. And home-based services are used for a variety of contexts. They are classically thought of as an intervention for students on the autism, on the autism spectrum, but they are not exclusive to that community. So those are some of the special education interventions that we've used. So when I say which students, you know, it kind of depends on what we're talking about. Are we talking about special education students and their targeted interventions, or are we talking about all students and providing student supports? I put that information on two slides so you could kind of divide the world, not that our world is divided, just so that you can understand there are two different approaches. Social-emotional skill development, which we're going to be talking about kind of from this point in the presentation forward, is really a curriculum-based initiative for all students. Oftentimes, you'll hear, and we'll talk about SEL, Social-Emotional Learning, there is a misnomer that it is somehow something extra that is done. And on the next slide, we're going to talk, or I think it's two slides, we're going to talk a little bit about what SEL really means. School counselors, school adjustment counselors, psychologists, they all play an important role. They all have different jobs to do, and they're all alive and well in our, in our district. For students with identified weaknesses in social and emotional skills, schools will intervene with a tiered model of support. So it's not that if a student struggles, they are immediately pushed into, you know, special education. There are, there's an entire tiered level, tier one, tier two, tier three, tiered level of response, which used to be called Response to Intervention, and is now called MTSS, which is the Multi-Tierred System of Support. But what it looks at is how are we, what it really means is how are we assisting students in school with the acquisition of these skills? And then lastly, students who require that specially-designed instruction for social-emotional disabilities are the ones that are found eligible for special education. Student access to clinical services outside of school are also one facet of this process. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that when I talk about this model. I wanted to show you this graphic. This is called the CASL Wheel. CASL, C-A-S-L, it's an acronym, and it stands for the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning. When we are talking about social-emotional learning, we are talking about, if you look on the inner part of this circle, these five core competencies, okay? We're talking about self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making, okay? SEL is not just mental health, it is all of these core skills. As you can see, mental health is very much connected to these five core competencies, which is why we talk about it. But it's best understood as targeting these five distinct areas. So that's what the inside of that circle means. When you look at the four rings surrounding the circle, and you can see it says classrooms, schools, families and caregivers, and communities, these are the key settings that require collaboration between school, family, and community. This is really where students live and grow, these four outer rings. This is why social-emotional learning, and to some extent, mental health, is not something that can be ameliorated just by public school intervention, or any school intervention. You have to engage the community, families and caregivers, schools, and then, and then also within our classrooms. So I wanted to give you this graphic so you could kind of see a little bit more about what social-emotional learning is. This, the CASL group, they are the group that coined the phrase "social-emotional learning", that's where SEL really comes from, and this model is widely used throughout our state for social-emotional learning. So with that, I think I'm, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin, and he can talk a little bit about social-emotional learning in our schools.
Excuse me. So when I started, I came, I think I started in late September, so the first several weeks, months- So the first several weeks, months of getting here was just getting to know the buildings, getting to know the district leaders, the principals, the vice principals, and then figuring out what we were doing already, right? So obviously, you don't want to come in and, and, you know, have to reinvent the wheel if we're already doing a bunch of things well, which, you know, is evident when you look at what we're already doing in our school system right now. So, you know, we, we are accessing an SEL screener right now at MKG and HBB. We aren't doing an SEL screener in middle school or in high school. But you'll see in the next slide, that is something that will actually be rolled out at the end of this year, which will be the first time that we'll do it at the middle school and high school level. So we have a, a social thinking curriculum, which is really common phrases in language that is built in amongst an environment, a culture, a community, that they can build off of each other, right? So if a teacher's saying, you know, expected behaviors, then if another teacher, who may or may not be a teacher, says expected behaviors, the students know what they're talking about. And that's kind of the idea around social thinking. Something very valuable, especially at the elementary school level and even the middle school level, where they're, where they're highly influenced by their peers and their teachers, is getting that common language. And HBB and MKG do a fantastic job. Specifically, specifically, but Berkland Best, that, that Mr. Thompson does at HBB is an add-on to that, something cultural and systemic that they kind of build through. And that builds culture and community. I think if any of you guys have been in HBB and kind of seen the kids cashing in at that little store, like, they love it. And they build it, and they talk about it, and that becomes culture. That becomes the expectation, right, of their behavior. And that is what builds success in students. It builds confidence in them to believe that they can do that and that they're being acknowledged for things that they're, that they're accomplishing in, in their day-to-day. And that's something that, you know, Middleborough is already doing, right? So even at the high school level, which is SEL curriculum at the high school level is rare, right? We don't see it a lot, particularly because the clientele is different, right? When you start growing a beard, you're not really interested in exactly sitting down and learning about your emotions, but there's backdoor approaches that you can do that Mr. Brandington does a fantastic job of providing support for his students in a way that is holistic and natural and built into the environment of MHS. So that is an important part to think about when you're, you're talking about, like, how are we supporting these kids as they're transitioning into adults? How are we supporting them? Thinking outside the box is critical, right? You can't just have them sit down and regurgitate a lesson plan of, of their emotions, and then they're just going to all of a sudden be bought in. It has to be something, again, cultural-based, which Mr. Brandington does a really good job at. So as I kind of went through the, the last several months, you know, I kind of looked at our strengths, and then I looked at some areas of weakness and some areas that we should improve on. And these next few slides are kind of the things that I'm envisioning in the, in the years to come, so a two- or three-year plan. So in the fall, I applied for a, a grant through the state for supporting students' social emotional learning, behavioral, and mental health and wellness through MTSS, basically. So we received $68,000 through that grant, which is, was fantastic. And what we're using that money for is a student tracking system called Panorama, which I'm going to talk a little bit more specifically about in the next slide, but something that as a district, you know, I'm very excited about, and I think is going to really support our students and staff and help us K to 12 really get on the same, the same kind of avenue of support for our students. So $40,000 of that is being used to support Panorama, and $28,000 is to be used as a stipend to help me build the team, to help me get this off the ground. Because with five buildings and one of me, I will need some other experts in the buildings to be able to support Panorama and the rollout of our SEL screener, K to 12, along with some of our changes in the clinical kind of atmosphere that we're trying to, to build. So also, we've, we've developed, so I think, big time when you have a lot of adjustment counselors and school psychologists, a lot of times their bosses, vice principals, principals are teachers, right? So they're, they're not really supported by other clinicians who have done what they've done. So what we've tried to do, and what I'm doing now, is I'm the primary evaluator for all of our clinical staff in the district, and trying to get us on the same, using, again, using the same vocabulary, using the same systems, making sure that we're having the same protocols when we have certain circumstances come up. And that kind of team approach, I think, helps them feel supported and confident when they're going out and dealing with these sometimes very complex systems and how to work around. Previous to working in the school system, I worked for the state as a CRA, CHINS worker, adolescent social worker. So I have a lot of system knowledge as well of, of wraparound services. And I think that helps in terms of trying to make sure that, again, we understand that as a school, we have responsibilities here, but where does our responsibility start and end? And how do we help kind of formulate a plan around the student in a holistic approach that provides them the best level of support?
Do you mind if I hop in for a quick second? Kevin's being really modest. That grant that he applied for was a competitive grant that most communities did not get. So Middleborough was awarded this grant above several area communities near us and other organizations that had really great dynamic ideas. And they selected Middleborough based on the grant application that Kevin wrote. So he's being modest, but I won't be. So go ahead, you can talk about Panorama now.
So Panorama is a K to 12 student tracking program. So in a district the size with five schools, it's very easy to end up in silos. So every building doing their own individual thing. And HBB might put together a really, you know, fantastic intervention plan for their student, but then when they go to the middle school, a lot of times that, that paperwork and that program or that intervention kind of gets lost in transition. And although we can have conversations about it, and I may talk to the principal, and we may have, we may have an ability to kind of, you know, Google Docs or, or put together hard copies, it doesn't always formulate or transition as well. And I know that coming from another district, it's like that in a lot, in every way you go, pretty much. So Panorama is a tracking system that no matter what document or intervention plan that we put, it will follow them K to 12. So if something worked for them in kindergarten, and now they're in third grade, we'll be able to go back and look at things that other counselors or clinicians have done in the past and then build off of that, right? So it's, it's building off of strengths and weaknesses that we already know exist instead of constantly recreating the wheel at different levels. So this would be highly important for grades six and nine, as well as K to one, right? So when we're transitioning those schools to be able to track behavior plans or intervention plans, crisis responses, that's going to be critical in the way that we are able to monitor our students all the way, again, from K to 12, which is, I can't, I can't stress how important that is. And part of that, the Panorama, Panorama also assesses attendance, behavior, and academics, as well as tracking all of their common assessments through the district. So when you pull up a student, we'll be able to categorize them or look for trends in the district based off of literally anything we want to do. It could be by teachers, it could be by curriculums, it could be by economics or demographics, and we'll be able to pick up trends based off of all of that. The other big thing that we're going to roll out is that K to 12 SEL screener, right? So now, we're going to be able to assess where our students are self-reporting, as well as where the teachers are reporting these students are. And we're going to do that three times a year. Once at the beginning of the year, once in the middle of the year, and then once at the end of the year. And with that, we'll be able to, again, look for trends in that data. And this data is pulled from Aspen, which is our student program right now, a student data program right now. We'll be, we can, it's going to attach to Aspen, so the data from Panorama will be, will be implemented and changing day-to-day. So again, when we look at, you know, five, 10 years ago, when I was doing the Edwin Analytics, or when you were trying to find out reports through the state, you go on the ELAR account, and you pull up the data, and you get a team together, and you process all that data for weeks. And then you come up with a system or trends. But that, you spend weeks looking for, for trends in the district. Panorama is going to be able to do that in a day, which is going to save a lot of time and effort in looking for trends and more time and effort looking for solutions to those trends. So I'm really excited about that, so.
So I'll jump in just quickly because, you know, this school committee, sorry, I got it. This school committee has asked before about the transition experience for students, namely, going from K to one, and then again, from five to six, and then again, at eight to nine. Panorama would represent a single data mechanism that would follow the student all the way through their education. It's the first of its kind for Middleborough. So this is some, you know, kind of cutting-edge stuff. We're seeing this particular program unrolled in other communities. Kevin also has experience working with this particular program, so it is not unknown to him.
The next thing that we want to do, so what are we going to do with all that data? Right, so we currently have CSTs in all of our buildings. Each building does them a little differently. What we want to do with those clinical teams that we've been, have been working with is we want to come up with a universal approach to the CST so that they're similar in modalities. So when we're, we're doing referral processes, when we're having interventions, when we're analyzing the data, that it's all very similar between the buildings. So we can pick up trends, and, and when our kids are transitioning, the responses are very similar, and the families can get used to those responses. And I think that's really important when you're talking about building plans to help students' mental health. With Panorama specifically, what we want to do is increase our tiered levels responses. So in a, in a school system, like, and Middleborough is really good. We have 850 or so students, and there's three full-time adjustment counselors and a full-time psych. I came from a school, I was an adjustment counselor in a building with over 1,400 kids, and I was one adjustment counselor in that building. So there is a level of support with, with a school system that we have. Even at the middle school, there's three licensed adjustment counselors, which is very untypical for, for schools, specifically around here. So, but what we want to do is we want to start building capacity between those counselors and providing them a little bit more time and resources to do some of that tier-two level support, which is more of that significant interventions, groupings, pairings, outreach, wraparound services, that's that tier, tier-two level support. But then pushing back and giving the teacher support to have that tier-one level support, which is that classroom interventions. So if we can handle a lot of things in the classroom where teachers are seeing them a lot more, that's where you can kind of build a stronger system within the community at whole. So, you know, Panorama is going to help us build plans, push it out to the teachers, allow the teachers time to implement those plans, four to six weeks, come back to the team. And if they're not working, allow the counselors and school psychologists to now take that next level of support, whether it's tier-two or even tier-three. This will also help with our SPED referral process because by the time we get to referring kids for SPED, we will have had a systematic approach and delivery for what we've been trying to do and accomplish within the building and their classroom settings to, to provide them student success. So this is really going to document and give us good information when we go to, you know, just supporting them in general, but then also that, that special education, you know, referral process. Sorry, you got it. So this is when I talk about, like, SEL specifically in the secondary, middle school, and high school level. I talked a little bit about the curriculums we're doing, but I strongly believe that SEL is embedded into the structure of the buildings that we, that we are, you know, we're building with our, our community members. So an idea that we had, I, I worked with Josh Porter, the Director of Alternative Pathways, and then also Tony Cupe, who's the Innovation Lab Coordinator, the newly-developed, built, right, innovation coordinator. So I had this idea about building this alternative, our at-risk students. And I can, Josh, I'm sure could speak a little bit more to this, but his numbers are the highest they've been potentially ever. He's pushing close to 30 right now, and I know he's been, you know, typically under 20 in years past. So the need has been increasing, and so has the opportunity now to think outside the box on how do we support this evolving need. And so what we decided was to partner the Futures Alternative Program with the Innovation Lab to help build skills and capacity within the program. So what, what I did is I wrote a grant, again, through Mass Hire and Youth Works, to partner with them, where they're going to be able to pay our students, they'll pay the salary, to be able to place our students in community jobs of choice. So they're going to go to the Innovation Lab, and they're working on specific skills. So they're going to work on carpentry, they're going to work on wood design, they're going to work on techno, tech design, and a lot of the programming and, and building that they have in that program. They're going to learn those skills, and then we're going to pair them, as you can see through some of those field trips attached. We are going to pair them with opportunities in our community in areas that they think they might be interested, and then have this grant pay for them to get exposure in that field. And what happens is, is that you hope it's about, ends up being about 200 hours that we're able to pay for each student at minimum wage, or just, just about minimum wage. Like, I don't know what minimum wage is now, it's like $14.75. But they'll go, they'll get 200 hours of paid experience in these fields, and it attaches work to school. So if you do well in school, you get to work and get the hours. If there's issues in school, then you have direct contact with the, with the bosses in the industry. And it kind of goes hand-in-head, and it's building capacity to understand that what we're talking about here in school has value and it's, and it's purposeful outside of just here, right? Be on time, be respectful, communicate well. All of those things, if you can do those things, pretty much, I mean, I made a career off of that. I'm certainly not the smartest person in the world, but I show up on time, and I'm generally respectful. So that's, that's social emotional learning. I figured that out at a young age, very proud of myself. So we can handle all of that and build capacity with kids that no longer is an alternative program just diploma-chasing. It's career-chasing, and it's giving them a purpose and a model to pursue. Then that is what I envision building more and more of at that secondary level and even that elementary, the middle school level. You know, Tony Cupe has a strong desire about building something at that middle school level, whether it's a class, or a shop, or something. But giving kids, especially those at-risk learners, especially students with mental health issues, especially those who, who kind of get defeated when they're not good at a certain subject. You know, I think that is building the holistic approach to a student-designed success. Giving them the opportunity to understand that all you have to do is be good at something and be good at, you know, kind of have balance through the course of life. So that's something that we're off the ground right now. Josh and Tony have done a great job. They are doing their first field trip this Friday, which, and Josh, you know, he's the director of the program. He's down in that classroom teaching it every, every two days, which he does not have to do, but he is, you know, he wants to see this have success. And, and it's, it's paramount, obviously, that, that he's doing it. So they've done a great job with it so far. So these are a couple ideas that we're looking at in the future. So what I think, you know, we have a lot of the SEL curriculums. What I want to do in the future is to try to come up with a universal K to five curriculum. I'm currently piloting one right now in HBB. But the goal would be to get them all on the same page, using the same vocabulary, having the same lessons. So that way, when they go to the, the middle school, that it's the same, right? So that they're getting the same lessons, the same strategic approach. And with that, the same, I'd love to, and I've talked to Derek Thompson about this quite a bit, about building it, SEL indicators and standards into the report card at some point. Some districts have been doing this. It is useful and important because it takes it away from being that really concept of just being another thing to being a very important thing and something that we can value and monitor moving forward. So that's something that we're looking at right now. We're also in the process of examining the health curriculum at the high school and middle school levels because that's a great opportunity to build in some, some natural mental health supports and resources within the school, school structure, and then reexamining how advisories run at the high, high school. Mr. Brandington and I have had conversations about trying to make that real purposeful and designed based off of relationships. And, and, you know, obviously, Mr. Brandington is super supportive of, of looking at anything that helps student success. So, you know, I've only been here for six months. You know, I'm really excited next year for Panorama and rolling out our first SEL screener prior to June 30th of this year, which was part of the grant agreement. So that will be by, by June 30th, you know, so I think that's it.
Well, so hopefully, I mean, we would certainly invite any questions you have, but hopefully, this presentation was illuminative as to, you know, sort of what you can expect as, as a family member in terms of support. Hopefully, you have a better understanding of exactly how it is where we're addressing social emotional need. And I hope that you take away from this that this community is extremely supportive of these efforts, and it has been for quite some time. It is central to what we do. It is how we plan for success for every student in every classroom every day. So with that, any questions, I would welcome that.
As usual, there's just so much information in these presentations that I've seen from you over the years, but this is incredible. And, and by the way, Kevin, so only six months, and this is, okay, so that's good. So I'm always impressed by the structures and, and obviously, the level of detail that we have. But I wondered if you could help me to understand from kind of like, But I wondered if you could help me to understand from kind of like, you know, single students sitting there in the classroom, kind of having a crisis, what are the methods that that student can either be noticed or seek help while they're just sitting there? You know, how does that happen in practice?
So the goal is to build those tier-level one supports, right? So the teacher, the relationship, a lot of teachers do check-in, check-outs. They have systems in place that are already built in, so they know, you know, if a student comes in who's not feeling very well. You know, the teacher is going to try to figure out what's going on. If it's something that they don't feel professionally comfortable with, then typically they'll reach out to one of the adjustment counselors or school guidance counselors and they'll come down and they'll address it. You know, from there, it's whether or not they they have a relationship with the student. If this is something that they've already kind of addressed and worked through, they might already have a system of coping skills in kind of, you know, forum, or if it's a new student, that's what they're going to kind of figure out. You know, from there, they're going to reach out to the parents and and see if there's outside therapists involved and then try to team with the outside therapist about best ways to support them in the school. So there's always that that fine line of understanding the difference between a school counselor and then a therapeutic psychotherapist outside of school and and making sure that you're finding that balance. Because in a school, it's very hard to do psychotherapy and come up with a real, it's not very hard. It's it's it shouldn't be done in a lot of areas because of the amount of things that you might unpack or or process through that isn't conducive to them being in a public school setting. And so you have to be cognizant of that fact. You know, with that said, it happens regularly, you're always going to go further than you probably want to. I mean, I can speak personally to that, but you you base it based off of the relationship you have and your comfortability on where this is going. I don't know if that answers your question.
The only thing I would add is what's embedded in that answer is that there's also a clinical analysis of the need, okay? So developmentally, students struggle sometimes and that struggle, depending on the student, can look a variety of ways. That's not that atypical. So when you have a clinical intervention, one of the first things that clinician does is is they're assessing. What do I already know about this student? Is this a student who's already identified? Do we already have, you know, information, assessment data on this particular student? Is this student just having an off day? You know, the other part of this is making sure that we're raising and helping children to understand that it's okay to struggle. Struggle is is actually part of growth. So there's there's also that part that's embedded in all of this. We we welcome kind of productive struggle, right? It's okay to have a bad day, it's okay to struggle, everything doesn't get pathologized. But what what Kevin is, you know, kind of intuiting here is that somebody who's responding is already doing a whole host of things. That's why they have their degrees and they've had special training to intervene that way.
Other question?
As you know, I appreciate this, this is near and dear to my heart, so I appreciate your presentation. I just had some questions. I think what I'm understanding from this whole new process for the Panorama is that, like you mentioned, the M K G and H B B, they do such a great job where they, you know, catch kids being good and that's, you know, at that age, it's exactly what you need. In fact, years ago, I started that school store, the Husky Haven, so it's something I've, you know, been really having a good time with. But my question is, Mr. Abatabla, you and I talked about this a little bit, but at that that higher level, you know, we talk about you get maybe twenty-five or thirty students who are really struggling and that they're sort of known to be struggling students. And then you have these sort of high-level ROAR awards students at the middle school or your, you know, high honor roll students at the high school, but then you've got maybe seven hundred kiddos in the middle there. So is this program really geared towards catching those kids and and really pushing them towards a good place where we're we're noticing them more? Is that?
Yeah, so I mean, as as we've kind of discussed, I mean, the kids who are the top twenty-five percent are going to probably thrive regardless of the systems in place and the students who are, you know, the heavy hitters that the ones that you're going to see time and time again and be very aware of. Again, you're also going to kind of be be very aware of what's happening with them. Those middle fifty percent of the kids, it can very easily fall through the cracks. And that doesn't mean things aren't going on at home, that doesn't mean that they're not internalizing things. It doesn't mean that they don't need some level of support. So by doing the S E L screen at K to twelve, particularly in that secondary and high school level, that might shed some light on those students. But in addition, even if it doesn't, because we're tracking attendance, behavior, conduct, as well as the common assessments, it we're really able to look at every area that the school can provide to look for trends. So if there's a student in that mid-level who's identifying in certain areas in that S E L screener and is also struggling a little bit attendance-wise, but not enough where admin's really involved or and, you know, they might have a conduct area that you're starting to look for that. And now we're able to be proactive with that student rather than reactive. So instead of him having a massive incident or hospitalization or suspension, now we can have counselors reach out or we can come up with intervention plans prior to that event happening based off of the information that we're getting. So I think that is why Panorama can be so effective and those C S T teams are going to be paramount and analyzing that school data on a weekly basis because you were looking for those trends to be proactive. And then again, we're able to push in that tier-level response into the classroom setting and allowing more time for our counselors to do true tier-two level supports. And tier-two level supports is a little bit more intensive, a little bit more supportive and and able to kind of formulate groups or or larger systems around students in a supportive manner. So that is why it's it's, I'm really excited to bring that to Middleborough because it's going to open up a lot of conversations and maybe systems or with students that didn't exist in the past.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions. First, I just wanted to make a comment because similar to Teresa, this is very near and dear to my heart too. So I I'm like obsessed with what you're doing with Futures. That's amazing and that's something that those kids need so, so much. So thank you for all of that work and especially to hear that it's already in place, it's already starting. That just is awesome to me, so thank you for that. But I did have a couple of questions. So the C S T team, who do you envision as a part of this team? Are we talking about teachers, Sacks, kind of everybody?
So we we came up with, we've we started it right now in the middle school, so we've already started the pilot. Some of the other schools have already had systems in place, so we're going to roll it out probably a little bit later in the school year, if not into the fall. But in the middle school, we've started it now, so it's very systematic on who we're who we're doing. It's an admin and it's a counselor or a psych who are kind of leading the team. And then in addition, it's specialists, so O T, P T, S L Ps, speech and language pathologists, teachers, special educators, but we're trying to keep the team around that six or seven with highly specialized people in the school systems or in the in the in the school so that it's consistent for the staff and in the building. There might be, you know, drop-ins and the teachers who are presenting the students will come down and give their feedback, but the team will stay consistent and the team's going to be diverse and experienced. And and that's important because whether you're coming down for academic involvement or behavioral or mental health, like we want somebody in that process who has some level of of really good experience in all sorts and all of those facets so that we can come up with a plan that is comprehensive and supportive and not just singular. If we only had counselors in there, then we're only going to be looking at it from one lens. If we only have teachers, it's only going to be from an academic lens. We really need a supportive holistic approach where we're where we're trying to, you know, figure out what what we can do to best support the kid. I feel like I'm saying that a million times.
And then the the new program that we're getting, the Panorama, does that include tracking communication between parents, teach, teachers, kind of everybody?
So it can, it it doesn't necessarily have to. If we have a conversation with the parent, you know, it won't necessarily go in there. But if it's something valuable to the intervention plan or to the student specifically that we want the team to know, then it will, right? So I think that's the differentiation. If it's just a student, if we're just reaching out like and it's not really valuable information, it won't necessarily. But if it's something that can be valuable for myself, for the team that we're currently involved with, or more importantly, even years to come, then it could definitely be uploaded in there and it stays with them again. So I think that's the important part of that is just the the ability to track the students no matter where they go.
Thank you. Two more, if that's good, thank you. Can you talk about how you're supporting kids that are transitioning out of high school? So those kids that are either twenty-two plus or the kids that are, you know, struggling behaviorally, how we're supporting them once they move on?
No, I can jump in on that. Our programming has really blossomed in the the this building is going to be really critical in how these programs are shaped in the future. Right now, we have a robust transition process. Again, it's called transition. I know it's the same word over and over again and it means a different thing every time you say it, unfortunately. But our transition planning in Middleborough starts at fourteen, which is supposed to across the state. And attached to every I E P, because we're talking about for the large areas, we are talking about students who are already identified with special education needs and are on an I E P, Individualized Education Program. So this starts at fourteen and in addition to your I E P, you are drafting a transition planning form, T P F. I know, Mr. Ogley, you hate the acronyms, but I'll try to get through them every time I say them. This transition planning form is divided into three pieces, okay? The first is the vision and it's really the student's voice. It's not, I mean, it's tempting, you sit at these meetings and there's a bunch of adults at the table and we all have this idea about what we want that student to do, but it's really the student's voice. So if the student says, I want to be famous and a rock star, then we have something to work with. That may not be at fourteen, you know, where that child stays at twenty-two, but that's okay. It starts with their vision. The second piece of the transition planning form really looks at what are their needs? What are their disability-related needs? And then the third part is that action plan. So one of the partnerships that we've been able to do, they come right here to the Middleborough High School, is that we've partnered with M R C, the Mass Rehab Commission, and they provide pre-ets, pre-E T S, which is, I'm not going to be able to get that one out, but it's pre-vocational programming and transition. It's all about transition services and it's actually an entire spectrum. So it it's a whole list of things that could be from, you know, some students don't exactly know what the next step is. That's not uncommon, that's not uncommon for adults, to be honest with you. So there's a there's a lot of kind of self-actualization and self-determination that can be part of pre-ets, all the way to job placement and paid employment. So it's a full spectrum, right from where do you, the very beginning, all the way through paid employment. Pre, M R C comes and and meets with our students here in the building. We also partner with other agencies like D M H, the Department of Mental Health, and D D S, the Department of Developmental Services. These agencies start attending our team meetings at the time that either the student is one year away from graduating or in any case, over eighteen. So kind of every case is a little bit different, but they're at the table and we spend a lot of time transitioning students into what becomes adult service, either at eighteen with the diploma or at twenty-two when they age out. And what that looks like is a completely individualized process. I've sat in kitchens with with citizens in our town and and talked about the future and we've gone to sites to visit. I will tell you that a lot of the sites have slowed with COVID. They're like they were closed and or backlogged, but I'm happy to say things are opening back up and students are being are being placed. So oftentimes, that can mean multiple meetings. But beyond that, you know, Mr. Brannigan actually has a program here at the high school for an internship process for for all seniors. So whether or not they're on an I E P or not, all students are kind of planning for that transition out of high school one way or the other. I believe he also has a community service requirement, if I'm not mistaken. He is not looking at me, so he's not going to answer my question. Did that answer your question, Ms. Dennis?
Yes, thank you.
Also, that the program that we're doing with Futures, the goal of that is to grow that program. So under the grant that we had, you start small. So we had fifteen slots that we were eligible for, but that can grow exponentially. And so the goal for that would be, especially when we're talking about that middle-tier level kid, Teresa, like building some of those kids into that programming as well. So right now, it's in the pilot, trying to get it off the ground, show success, so that way we can guarantee funding from year to year. But once we do that, you know, that would be another resource that the community could have, again, to have paid employment in jobs that aren't just, you know, Dunkin' Donuts or Wendy's, which are fine, but it's not career exploration for some of those kids who are looking for a little bit more direction in that area, so.
Wait, can I just add on one more thing because Val Ruffo will go bananas if I forget to talk about the Cranberry Cafe and I really wanted to make sure I did. This was part of the plan for this building that Mr. Brannigan always saw as a piece of it, which was having a cafeteria, not a cafeteria, like a cafe, built right into the to our school. And if you haven't toured it, I highly recommend you do. This is all entirely run by students and it's the full gamut of skills. So it's not just food prep, it's food service, it's culinary, it's, I mean, it's soup to nuts and actually the food is fantastic. You can actually go and place your order on Thursdays and get some of the best food I've had on Fridays. So why having experiences like that are so critical is because it's right here on our campus. And having access to that sort of programming not only is unique, but when it's entirely student-driven, it's really rich with learning opportunity. So you're talking about going to Hannaford's to purchase and acquire all of the ingredients, follow the recipe, prepare the food, prepare the eating environment. So if you go, it's it's very much a cafe. I've gone, they even have note cards to give feedback on how they did. It's an extremely professionally-run experience and it's really translatable. So I wanted to make sure I talked about that because Mrs. Ruffo would have had my head for sure.
Thank you. Last question.
Specifically with this, you just got me thinking, because, you know, we talk about students who are eighteen, who are in our Gen Ed programs and they graduate and they look to college. So now we've got our twenty-two-year-olds who are aging out. Is there any collaboration with other programs, like maybe not college, but some sort of next-level learning facilities? I I believe there's something out there called MACI, is it MACI? So I was just wondering, it just got me thinking about that.
Sure, we actually have a concurrent enrollment program here at the high school through the Jim Braga Partnership that all students can participate in, including special ed students. And that allows a student to take, there are classes that are business-related, childcare-related, and I believe there's a third one, say that again? And criminal justice, how could I forget that one? And the third one was criminal justice. This is housed here at the Middleborough High School and does provide access and concurrent enrollment. So we do have a program. There's going to be more, actually, to that point, there's going to be, and I don't have the date on me, a CPAC meeting in April for any interested parties. We're going to be talking specifically about transition services and that will be happening in April, I believe, at this building. I'll post it, you know, on my Twitter handle and we'll we'll, I'll make sure I send out an email as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so now I have two more, but one for me and one from the internet. So my last question is, can we see the screener that you develop for M K G, H B B before it's distributed?
Yes.
And then from the virtual world, they wanted to know if Panorama includes any outside clinical information and if it does, what are the security features that'll be in place?
Yeah, so we we wouldn't like provide any treatment planning that a psychotherapist would add or any hospital discharge, anything like that. Anything outside would still stay maintained in their their student profile, student records for that reason. So this would be purely like intervention-based for the student themselves.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sorry to keep the focus so specific, but the reason I reached out to you originally was was kind of trying to learn more about the what happens when there is some sort of an event. And you, I I thought the answer was great and so thank you previously, but I wanted to know what is the interplay between the district S E L framework, structure and district nursing? Because I know me, as a kid in school, if I were having a really bad day, I might, you know, have a stomach ache and that was my escape sometimes. And I I was just kind of curious, what does it look like when, you know, something like that happens? Obviously, you can only go off of what a student is saying. I'm sure there are tons of nonverbal cues, but how how would a student head to the nurse's office and then end up receiving some sort of care or treatment through the the kind of S E L structure? What does that look like?
Sure, I'll I'll start with that. It's funny, Paula Magnasco and I were talking about that just this week because we were talking about Panorama and what the entry point would be for our school nurses. She is famous for saying the exact phrase you just said. She said, you know, nurses often are the door that's open. If a counselor is busy or if a student's maybe not comfortable walking to a counselor's office, very frequently, it will present as a tummy ache. So that is something that not only are we well aware of, but one of the reasons they're involved and going to be involved with this Panorama process is to provide that transparent communication. The short answer to your question is, we talk to each other. That's how we figure out that we need to intervene. And it really depends because sometimes it really is a stomach ache. Other times, a stomach ache means something else. Our nurses are extremely skilled at identifying which and even better, at communicating with building-based admin, teachers, you know, wherever the student has come from in order to have that kind of additional query. So I think that, you know, their work with Panorama will be like everyone else, which will be everyone throughout the throughout the buildings.
And and as the big mental health conversation has increased over the last decade, you know, it's become, when you were in high school, we could definitely get away with it because it was a little bit, the the conversation wasn't as prevalent. Whereas now, if you see the same student for four days in a row or four times in every two weeks, the nurse is naturally going to reach out to who's the counselor. I need to talk to the counselor, this seems to be a trend, it seems to be somatic, you know, what are we going to be doing? And then they kind of formulate a plan from there. So, you know, with the increased knowledge and increased conversations, issues like that tend to work themselves out through professionalism and relying on our trainings.
Excellent, thank you.
The Castle Method that you mentioned earlier, I've I've seen it, I've heard of it. But so one of my my personal concerns as a parent, and I I hope I speak for others as well, would be when you look at it, it shows the child and and then there's school and it looks, I think, family comes, family and family supports comes like third. So is that really telling us that school is going to be a source of contact before a family? I just want to understand that or make sure that I know as a parent that I'm the first point of contact and if my child's having a concern, then I will be contacted immediately. There's not three things that have to happen before I'm told my child's having a hard time or, I just want to make sure I understand it.
Sure, I I don't think it's necessarily about an order of communication. I actually think it's an order of how we're going to see it. So when you look at those five core competencies, they're explicitly taught when when actually working on social emotional learning and that happens within a classroom, which happens within a school. The hope is to push those skills to those outer rings and develop collaborative relationships. But I don't, I mean, you can jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't see it as a communication method, more just that these are all the domains where where children live. And I think that classrooms in schools are there just because it's closer to those. And I think that classrooms and schools are there, just because it's closer to those points of instruction. Not that families aren't teaching these core core competencies, I'm sure they are as well, it's just.
But Castle is an education model. So it's speaking from that lens in terms of understanding what we're seeing as educators in the classroom, as teachers. So it's certainly not, you know, diminishing any parent role or community role. Those are equally as important. It's just as a teacher, seeing this today, like what is, what do we need to do as a school community to build success for us students? And then how does that look? So understanding that there is a multi-tiered system that we have to rely on in order to achieve that success.
Okay. Thank you.
I know that you you mentioned a bunch of things that make Middleborough different, from what I heard, I think, than than other districts, whether it was the, you know, the building psychologist, or the some of the staffing levels that we have within our PPS department. Sorry. But I was just curious, I I just quickly glanced back at the budget presentation from a couple of weeks ago to see that the PPS department has a decent chunk. And I was curious what your thought was on how Middleborough stacks up on investment into this area versus other districts, I guess, around here, but in Massachusetts in general.
You mean in terms of like the financial investment? You know, to to be transparent, I I haven't analyzed other school budgets, including, you know what I mean? I just, I devote my energy here. What I can tell you is those are typical areas of cuts. So I think what makes Middleborough so unique is the prevailing philosophy, to be honest with you. And that's held at our highest level through our superintendent, and then honestly, through our school committee. Because that's something that's existed for as long as I've been here. And that's just not typical. You know, I won't, I won't name communities because it's not, it's not appropriate to do so. But it is not uncommon to say, our budget is short. And we can't, you know, we'd prefer to not cut schoolteachers because those are directly interfacing with with kids every single day. So there's a natural grab to say, well, if you look at your counseling staff, do we really need three at this building? We could probably make do with one. And this community just has not done that. And, yeah, I would argue that PPS does have a healthy, does represent a healthy portion of our budget.
And that's a good thing, I think.
But I'll.
To be clear.
But I'll tell you, I mean, to to just flip this on the on its head for a minute. You know, part of the the special ed expenditures in other towns also has to do with what they're spending in terms of added district tuitions and placements. And I would argue that the robust programming that we have here in Middleborough is part of what keeps that figure lower competitively and comparatively to other communities. So, you know, that adage, you have to spend money to make money. I would argue that one of the reasons we've seen those numbers stay relatively lower has to do with the investment we've made upfront and the quality of the programming that we provide. But you are asking a biased source, of course.
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Please.
I just want to tell you, Rich, that that I've been in education for a while. You guys know, we've talked about it, thirty-nine years this year, and I'm done. But thirty-two years previous to my time in Middleborough, I was an elementary teacher. I was an assistant principal at the elementary level, principal at the elementary level, assistant principal at middle school, principal at the middle school level. When I met principal of the elementary school, I had a school of a thousand kids in Bridgewater. I did not have a school adjustment counselor, not one. I had one school psychologist, begged for more every year, didn't get it. When I was an elementary teacher, there was no such thing. And when I was a middle school teacher, working in the middle school, at a middle school, excuse me, middle school administrator, I did not have one. I had one guidance counselor for a school that was seven hundred students strong. So my first experience with school adjustment counselors was Middleborough. When I came in, it seemed like there was just a plethora, there was just so many. And 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 since then, we've even developed more. And as you see, we've added more and added more because we realize the importance of these individuals, these professionals, when it comes to the well-being of a child. So just from experience, I would tell you that that Middleborough is pretty well-off in this regard.
Great. Sorry, I had a follow-up. I was planning on asking it anyways, but you you paved the way so perfectly with that. I think, I was trying to remember, it was a couple of years ago, I think, and you were presenting to us about the PPS department. And I remember I asked something to the effect of, is there something we can do to build additional capacity here to to provide adequate services so we don't have to send kids out of district? And and I mean, I think you know what your answer was then, I'm sure, because it's the same now. But I was curious if you think that, let's say it was two years ago, have we built additional capacity in the past couple of years that that, you don't have to get specific, but that could have allowed us to serve more kids here as opposed to sending them outside?
Absolutely. I mean, I I watch, you know, our referral numbers, I've seen our hospitalization numbers, and I and I monitor all of the sort of bids for out-of-district placement. This district hasn't gone to a hearing in ten, over ten years. And this district really has not had to kind of go through what other communities have gone through. So for me, that that's your proof right there. I absolutely think the expansion of our programs, and there has been quite a bit of expansion. It hasn't happened with magic. It has happened with dollars and cents, it really has. But I've long said about Middleborough that the real secret is the quality of the staffing that we have here. And, you know, you have kind of this hotbed of people who really are experts in their field. I think our families know that, and I think our families are happy with it. So happy families tend to lead to long careers in districts. And I think that that has a lot to do with it, too.
Awesome. Thank you. Defense rests, Mr. Chair.
I think the other thing, too, though, that's important to mention is, while it's always our intention to keep students in district, there are students who shouldn't be in the district because of their needs. They need to go to out-of-district placements, be that a collaborative, or be that, in some cases, residential settings that are the best for them. And I don't think we were looking to change that because some of those things we can't, we can't have here in Middleborough because we're not designed. For example, we're not designed to be a residential program, it's just not the way we're supposed to.
Absolutely. The least restrictive environment is a continuum, and it's and it's decided on an individualized basis. So you're always going to have students that that warrant that level of intervention. And and that, you're absolutely right, Chairman Young. You're out, you're, the goal is not to not have students enter out-of-district placement. But the goal, there is at least some desire to make sure that those numbers are are on par with, you know, what the state average is and what other communities, you know, are are doing as well, to be honest with you. So, yeah, I agree. There there are students who absolutely warrant, and and it's appropriate. I monitor a healthy sum of the out-of-district placements myself for that reason.
Meg, go ahead.
Just to follow up to the virtual question. So they asked, if an outside clinician writes a diagnostic letter to qualify for a 504 plan, then that would not be included in the Panorama data?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Anyone in the audience have any questions? Seeing none, Kevin, thank you for coming to your first meeting with us. And Kelly, thank you for presenting, it was excellent, I really appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Comprehensive report. Thank you very much. Moving on, Mr. Chair, we have a business office update from Sarah Hickey, Director of Business and Finance.
Thank you, Superintendent Lynch. I first, I want to say, when the agenda was published, it says business office update. And my staff is very staff, very savvy, and they came to me and asked what what's going on in the business office. So this is not really about the people and the staff of the business office, although we appreciate them greatly. The ESER III grant, I've spoken with you about the ESER III grant before. Just to give you a little history, the, all of the ESER grants allowed for improvements to school ventilation systems. And in July, when I submitted the ESER II grant, in that grant was monies for a replacement for the chiller at the Memorial Early Childhood Center. That grant was approved in July. That has gone out to bid, we're working with the construction crew for that. When the ESER III grant was submitted in October, all of a sudden.
One second. There's a little bit of reverb from the mic. You want to shut hers off, and I'll give you, I'll give her mine. Thank you. That's probably going to be better.
Adam's here to save us.
There you go.
Thank you. So when I submitted the ESER III grant in October, one of the things that essentially happened was the ESER III grant process ground to the hall, to a halt for all districts that had, that had those ventilation improvements. Because the federal government has very strict requirements about using federal monies on construction projects. So the Department of Education, in addition to their team of federal grant liaisons, had to hire engineers in order to go through the plans of of what was proposed by different districts. So I had submitted my application on October fourth. In December, I heard back from them that it was being held up by the federal government. I submitted more information in January. The Friday, February eighteenth, I received information that our ESER III grant was approved, for which we're very grateful for. So just to give you kind of a big picture, the ESER II grant, I said the MEC, the chiller at the MEC. The ESER III grant is, has a dehumidification system that's going to be going in at the pool at the Berklin School. And so that was what was holding up the project, the, I'm sorry, holding up the grant. Also, exciting things happening in the business office. This week, we had the bids for the boilers at the Memorial Early Childhood Center. That bid opening was on the first, on Tuesday. And so right now, that that information is out with the engineers. And I expect that we'll have a recommendation from the engineer who who checks the bids from all of the vendors. So I expect that we'll have a recommendation from the engineer next week as to who we should go with for that project. Also, this week, we had the request for proposals for before and after-school care due. And I am in the process of going through those and preparing them for the evaluation team to go through and make the selection for that program. And if I may, talk a little bit about Panorama. I I know that it, we had our presentation on social emotional learning tonight, tonight. I want to tell you how excited I am about Panorama. If you think about Panorama, the word meaning a wide view, there is a very robust data portion of Panorama for assessment data. We already have assessment data available through the Department of Education and all all kinds of data tools. But this is going to allow us to look at benchmark data and look at local data and to make curriculum decisions as well. And in in addition to all the great things you heard. So it really is a great program, and I'm excited about that.
Questions for Sarah?
Thank you, Sarah.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
You mentioned the the bids for before and after. I remember, obviously, we were, the last time that we did this, it was a little bit different of a situation, I think. But is is that something that any of us could take part in as well? The the evaluation team, or, no? Okay.
There's going to be a review committee?
Right.
You'd like the school community to be part of that, Mr. Chair? That is your choice.
Well, I mean, I think it's, I think it's, it's more of an internal structure now. We we went through it as a budget committee last time because there were some budget considerations that we needed particularly use. This really falls in the realm of day-to-day operations, so I would leave it to that.
Got it. That makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next thing on my item is, has already been covered?
Yep.
Just the notification of the the vote that's this Saturday. And I'll hand it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. I also just put on the agenda just reminders to people that the April, the annual town election is coming up, April second, and the special town meeting's coming up, just to have it on our dates.
You guys threw a comment in about the the town election. There's a twenty-day window prior to a town election for you to register to vote. So I'm not looking at a calendar right now, but twenty days before April second is the last day to register to vote in Middleborough? Is it the eleventh? Okay. Got it. Thank you.
MSBA project is up there. We haven't had a meeting since the last time we met. We have a meeting next week.
Next week. At the selectmen's meeting, it's open to the public. And there are no other, no other updates until the snow goes away and the ground starts to thaw and the green starts to grow.
For the superintendent search, just to make you aware, a couple of things. There's a meet and greet for the candidate for staff on three-seven, which is Monday. And there'll be a meet and greet for the community on three-nine, which is the Wednesday. Both those will be in the black box behind us. And then we're, next week, we'll establish the date for the candidate interview. And then, oh, go ahead.
I'm trying to get your attention, but this seems to be not working so great. I I just want to, I feel like I need, I owe the community, and, you know, this, that I continue to get pushed back. I know that the committee received a letter as well. But I still have these personal conflicts regarding the internal posting. And I I I feel like I just need to say it again. I think we should revisit our our thought process on continuing forward with the internal and look at external posting for the superintendent search.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to add on to that. I was looking at the MASC website specifically with regards to superintendent searches. And I saw that, obviously, they offer quite a number of things. But one of the lowest-level services I think that they have on there is that you can send a posting to them, and they'll just put it on the website. And I wondered where it wouldn't stop or slow down anything that's currently going on right now if we could just throw it out there on that website, if the committee thought that was a good idea.
Again, the committee chose to go internally and then make a decision, so that was.
It would have to come after.
Right. Exactly. So with that, Greg, I put in COVID subcommittee because you had, oh, Bob, go right ahead. Sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name's Bob Sullivan, Cedar Street here in Middleborough. Regarding the topic we're speaking about now, superintendent search. And as you well know, the school committee's main duties are the budget, policy, and the opportunity to hire a superintendent. And the hiring of a superintendent doesn't happen that often, which is good. It means the superintendent's been sitting there and working with you and, you know, and helps the the school to move, the schools move forward. I saw that there was going to be a candidate interview on the agenda. Maybe I read that wrong, but I think that's what it said. And, you know, I'm I'm wondering, I'm not asking you to answer this question, but what's the criteria the committee is using to determine that the candidate best fits the community? A search for a new superintendent provides the opportunity for the school committee, and I'm not saying you don't do this constantly with the phone calls and then whatever's going on with social media. But it gives you an opportunity to reach out to parents, reach out to members of the community to say, okay, here's the school district, and this is where we are, and this is what our goals were. And where do you see a superintendent that we're going to be looking for? How how do you see it? We have parents who, in the elementary grades, they weren't involved. They didn't even, weren't even considering what a superintendent does because the kids weren't in school yet, probably. And then our parents that were in elementary and middle school when the present superintendent was hired, they've been here for a while, they have experienced what's going on in the district. Getting input from them would be, I would think, really crucial as you're looking toward the future. Internal candidates, absolutely. If we have people in any district, have people that that you recognize as, geez, this person is, it looks like they really could bring the district to the next level, absolutely should be considered. But I will say, I have some experience with this. To have an internal candidate have the opportunity to demonstrate to the community and to the school committee that they are the best fit will really help that person when they, if they become the superintendent because they've had an opportunity to be compared with others that are out there, others that are interested. If no one wants, no one wants to apply, well, then, fine. But at least it shows the community that you've reached out and said, look, we want to get the best person possible. If the best person possible is that internal candidate, then that person will rise to the top. I will tell you, it would be much better for them if. if they're hired from a process that people understand and feel that they participated in as they're moving forward and working with the community later on. So I did hear at least one member of the committee voice some concerns, which is good. I heard the school chair say, well, we've already voted, and this is what we're going to do for now. Well, best of luck. I hope it works out best for the kids, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I'm going to move on to COVID Subcommittee, Greg.
So we did have a meeting last week. We had six people from the community attend. We talked about a lot of things that kind of went away after last week's decision to remove masks. And also, the blessing masking thing went away. But we are still, we did have some concerns about the process of how the, you know, the change in policy was going to be handled. I did forward those to Mr. Lynch. He did send out some information about how this process was going to happen. And a major concern from the public seemed to be that, you know, making sure that everybody was respected in the schools. And I said, that's basically our situation, no matter what the year is. You know, we want everybody to be respected. So we will be meeting again on the 11th.
Yeah, next Friday.
Which is next Friday at the Nichols Middle School Library. Everybody's welcome to attend. And I don't know much else we're going to talk about. We'll review what we've talked about yesterday, last time. But we'll have that meeting on the 11th at 4:15 in the Middle School Library.
Thank you, Greg. Next up is consent agenda. Chair wants to make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So move.
Do I have a second? Discussion, other than it's a fundraiser at Nichols and approval warrants. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. I should just point out, it's under other, we don't approve PTA fundraisers, but the PTA fundraiser is not happening, as far as I know. So I just wanted to let the committee know. With that, Chair will take a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Discussion, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you very much.